Let me say thank you. You're grateful to the squirrels.
Yeah.
That's good.
It's it's a fun show.
It is fun.
My nine year old gets into it pretty good.
Really?
Oh, and it's like we gotta watch another one. No, because we got that's like when I do that again, like binge watch. He's gonna be that kid. There is no doubt about it.
Sean, Dr. Quinn, Medicine Moment. Someone gave us those DVDs for the cinema. Cinematography. So beautifully filmed or something. In the two thousands, like two thousand one, but it's um set in the Wild West. But it's got like a PC thing to it because she's she's a doctor from Boston, but she's a woman. And I can get kind of obsessed with TV shows. Want to watch more more? Hi, not that one.
Ninety three to ninety eight?
That sounds about right. I get like my teeth hurt. It's so freaking sweet. You know, it's like, oh, it's just.
I don't think I've ever. I don't think I've ever watched that show. No, I don't recognize.
I know. I I really like. My husband has a rental and the young.
About matched.
The young tenants are really into film and social justice and all this stuff. And they're like, oh, man, you gotta watch this. Okay. I've never watched it. I've heard it, but I never watched. It's very interesting. And it's filmed earlier on. We have a.
I'm happy. I'm happy that you're happy.
Yeah, it's great. Yeah.
I think.
How about you?
I think he was doing a lot of pretending.
Yeah.
For our other. I think he was having some.
Don't need they see on night. Crack the windows open at night, you know.
Did you? Did you like me have to say we wanted to tree fall down? Or I was just like, I was dying inside saying, I was trying so hard to not.
By your forty forty minute of yes, I'll agree.
Well, I just shouldn't. We all like. We all like. They all agree on.
That's right. Yeah.
If I was sweaty, I'd shower.
Right, right.
But today I've been reading and.
Right.
Hello and thank you. Andrew, can you hear me? There we go.
I can. I can hear you.
All right, great. I can hear the room now, too. They took it off mute. Okay.
Yeah, I couldn't hear me there. I just figured they, you know, didn't want us hearing whatever was going on.
Yeah, they muted us on purpose, Andrew.
Yeah, yeah.
So we do a sound check.
Sounds good here.
Can you hear? Yeah.
Yes.
We heard you. Andrew, are you good?
Yep, I'm good.
We hear you. Good. Hey, we have a quorum here in the room, so we're good.
Oh, you want the monkey's. Sales guy.
It just count this.
Actually, I'm doing the backside of it.
Because these are doubles down here.
Right. Well, yeah, I was looking.
Andrew, how are you? Good. We're playing.
Hey, Richard. Orlando.
Yes.
Oh, yeah, that's solid. We're up this morning. That's all I can ask. You want to be on the right side of the crash.
But we'll just go on the right side here because these are single boxes. Me. Orlando.
Oh.
I'm gonna hear you then.
Sorry, I thought I did mark you already.
Yeah. Twenty twenty four. Yeah.
Orlando.
Catch you tomorrow morning.
I got. Andrew is here. That's great.
Yeah.
Mike's not coming. And Mike. Yeah, Mike needs to. Oh, that's uh, I'm sorry. It is August.
Paying any attention.
Did she sign up?
I did. There's some stuff on the radio.
I think we're all sad. Right. All right, let's start recording. You should. All right. Thank you, everyone. Welcome to the August twenty fourth, twenty twenty three Mountain County Planning Board meeting. Uh, we have a couple, three votes today. Uh, one of the minutes, two presentations. Uh, we do a quorum in house and we have two people on Zoom. So why don't we get to introductions? I call the roll. And you said as introductions, Bill Santos, uh, Mike Wedemar, your vice chair. Uh, Sam Chapani is not here. Andrew Hollister.
Present.
Orlando Rivera here. Dave Watson. Robert Barley.
Here.
Andre Evans. George Hebert. Rachel Bernhardt. I don't. I don't see her. Uh, Jeff McCann, but Adrian Green is here. Amy Grower, no, but Laura Smith is here. Robert Franklin.
Good morning, Chairman.
Noon. Josette's not here and you're in for, yep, Richard Tontalo. Christina Doherty. Mike Charlin isn't here, but I see Sean Murphy. Rachel, let's get you a seat.
I'm staying, but.
Yeah, make a spot for Rachel. Thank you.
You see it.
Yeah, no worries. Thanks for making it in. And that's it for, uh, board members, um, staff. Who wants to introduce Rochelle?
Rochelle Bell and Kim Hudson and Shilin were out in the planning. Has anyone and then we have.
Yeah, we have some people signed in students, so we can be able to sign in sheet maybe. Oh, oh, there we go. Come on, read off the names. We have Patrick Clay.
No, Robert Kylie.
Patrick Parrot, Robert Kylie, Thomas Morris.
Great. And Christine Durante. Thank you for information. So from Parks and Russian. Thanks for coming out, everyone. Right. So the first item on the agenda is the approval of the July twenty seventh, twenty twenty three meeting minutes. They were emailed to you and included in the packet. I need a motion for those, please. Thank you, Orlando. Thank you, George. Orlando, George. Is there any discussion on those? Any corrections? Nice job by Kim as as usual. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Thank you. Any more ayes on online? Any opposed? Any abstentions? Great. Minutes are approved. Thank you. Any announcements or communications from board members? From staff. Great. We'll move right into action items. So included in your packet was a recommendation to amend the twenty twenty three capital budget to increase the funding for the Manor County Park system wide facilities renovation project in the amount of fifty thousand dollars. And I do need a motion for that, please.
The most.
Thank you, Robert. And I had a second, Andre. And Andre. And. We have a continued from parks. So welcome. Take it away.
Thank you. I'll just give a brief description here. Um, the project, the sixteen point six million dollars is the, uh, stated the Manor County Park slide, uh, facilities, uh, renovation project. One component of that is the installation of a new spray park at Ontario Beach Park during, um, the design development of Wegmans companies became uh, in contact with, uh, county parks and sought to sponsor with a monetary value of a piece or a portion of the the spray park. We continued through design development and shortly before, um, bid packages were were awarded, uh, Wegmans came back with a financial contribution of fifty thousand dollars that they would like to, uh, donate to the county of Monroe uh, with the intent of sponsoring a specific piece of the, uh, spray park, which is, uh, the Leaking Beacon, which is a large lighthouse component that'll be, uh, installed at the spray park. Uh, so, uh, what's before the planning board today is is a, uh, that increase of fifty thousand dollars for that purpose.
Nice. So this was not originally planned to be part of the park. This is even the beacon.
Um, and that's a very good question. So the Leaking Beacon was proposed within the project and it was shortly after, you know, we were poised to award. So the project was was really already set in motion, uh, with the bids already received and the award letters poised to go out before. That's when uh, Wegmans came in, uh, with, uh, their request, uh, to to have some financial contributions. So they chose to sponsor, if you will, that Leaking Beacon.
The impression that they sponsored the whole park or anything.
During the press conference early, that was not the case. No, we kind of, they specified that they will have requested to have a plaque of some kind affixed to the, uh, structure of, I guess, I'll put it.
So that that would also allow any other donations to come in, I take it, or?
Um, absolutely.
Yes.
Yes.
Is there room for expansion or for, um, uh, just, yeah.
I don't think the project will grow, at least in its current, uh, component, you know, certainly in the future, uh, you know, years from now, i- if there was to be an expansion, you know, that that could certainly be contemplated. But at this time, the project limits, uh, spoken in scale of the project are pretty much set.
Where where is it, um, in the park? Is it like centered or is it closer to the beach or?
It is kind of centered on the park. So right in the, um, uh, one of the main entrances of the park is the, there's a main restroom there, playground directly to the west.
Yeah.
The spray park will be directly to the east and that's cited in that location because you have access to sanitary water right now.
To the west of the. Where the old merry round.
Uh, it's actually to the southwest of the, uh, of the carousel. Yes.
Nice. Any other questions? I don't see any. So all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Any extensions? Great. Nice job. Thank you for coming in. Motion is approved.
Thank you.
Uh, next item on the agenda is, uh, recommendation to amend the twenty twenty three through twenty twenty eight capital improvement program in the twenty twenty three capital budget to add a project entitled CDC Annex might be renovation in the amount of one million dollars. I do need a motion for that, please.
Go move.
Thank you, David and Robert. And here is, I take it, John, you're.
Yeah.
Yes, thank you.
All right. So the next slide, as always, I just put the, uh, letter in here so it's documented. The next slide, please. So you may recall that, uh, we've been to this board before to get funding and the project is underway to build the forty eight new beds out of Rush with the existing ten beds for a fifty eight bed facility. It's that's currently under construction. Uh, as this is all happening, there has been an influx of activity with youth, uh, smashing grabs, stealing that type of thing. So public safety, DHS, the county in general is looking to try to stem that tide. Part of that requires some additional beds to house youth if they're, uh, detained. So I just want to remind everybody what's going on in the world of the youth, right? So you've got juveniles, uh, fifteen years and younger adolescent offenders are the sixteen and seventeen year olds. That's the racey age thing. What we're going to talk about today or focus mainly is the juveniles, the younger younger youth that need to be addressed. So there's two components here. One is the increase number of youths that are uh, being addressed and the fact that we've got currently twenty one beds, I'm sorry, thirty one beds at the Children's Detention Center out in Rush. We have an additional eight beds that we've already constructed out at the Monroe Community or the Correctional Facility. And then we've got a variance for eight additional beds, uh, between the CDC and the correctional facility. Those are COTS. So I guess when I step back a little bit, as we've got the thirty one beds, those are actually bedrooms. The eight beds that are at the annex are currently bedrooms. The variants are COTS. So basically it's a dorm style situation, which isn't really optimal, both either for the youth or for the staff.
Yeah.
So with that, we want to expand the correctional facility and add ten additional beds and then be able to get rid of that variance in the the COD style. Along with that, as we're doing the construction, uh, the graphic up there shows the blue outline of what the new building is going to look like. We have created that, uh, temporary construction area. It's a secured zone that we're under construction right now. Building sixty seven in the lower right hand corner is where the ten SSD beds are right now. At some point, we're going to have to really relocate those youth out of that space so that we can finish the rest of the construction because you see the fence lines being moved and those youth are going to be, uh, not have access to any program areas. So a secondary benefit of this additional beds is to allow swing space for that to happen. Now, we did accommodate the swing space in our construction plan. We're constructing, you see on the left hand side, there's housing units, one, two, and three are currently under construction now because the current goal is get those housing units built so that when we're ready to swing, we can put the kids in those, the youth in those spaces. But in case something happens, we want to be able to have some additional beds just to allow, because because again, if something happens construction wise, a month before we're ready to move, we can't say let's build ten beds because it's not going to happen that quickly. So it's it's a dual purpose that we're, uh, wanting to build these additional beds. So if you go onto the next slide, uh, the correctional facility on Brighton, they're modular units. That's what mod means. It's the modular trailers that were built out there in the late, uh, nineteen nineties. My day already has eight additional beds. We built those out of operating funds last year. Those are currently being occupied along with, uh, the rush facility. So what we're looking to do is add to ten new beds and might be. So if you go to the next slide, please. This will show you a layout of what we're trying, what we're going to be doing here. So this is a wide open space that we use for dorm style back when, uh, adults were housed there. So we're going to build ten new wild bedrooms. And then the program space goes along with that lounge, dining, most types of things. So in addition to building those beds, we have to do some modifications to the mechanical and electrical portion of that because what's a wide open space now because we're creating individual wild offices. Each of those then has to have additional HVAC units and, uh, additional electrical and lighting that goes along with that. So that's what those costs are incorporating. We're also then have all the security that goes along with that for the protection of the staff and the youth at the same time. And then because we're going to be in there for a little bit longer than we may have anticipated initially, we have to address some fire protection needs required by New York State Building Code. So as a result of that, we came up with an estimate of uh, around eight hundred thousand dollars plus contingency engineering costs to go along with it. And that's how we derive the cost of a million dollars for this project.
Are they going to be using the, um, the main spine of the building at all for like the gym spaces and things like that?
Uh, so no, the gray area right there where the modifications are, that's all going to be just for youth. Right now there are no adults housing facility.
Right.
Right. So no, we're not going to use anything that's in the unshaded area.
No.
No. As a matter of fact, uh, the sheriff department at one point actually put in a door, almost like a bulkhead, if you will, and isolated the mod space from the rest of the space.
Gotcha.
So one of the things we had to do, and you could just barely see it, the lower right hand corner, we actually had to blow a door out of the one side because it was limited access.
All right.
For egress, if you will. So we actually had to make that change when we did the first revisions in my day. So with this, uh, with funding being available sometime in, uh, in October, by the time we get the the, uh, capital fund set up, the stopper period and all that, we can start purchasing equipment and supplies, materials in October. It should have this up and running by sometime in the second quarter of twenty four.
Follow twenty four, you said?
Pardon me?
Follow twenty four, you said?
I know, second quarter.
Second quarter.
Right. Yeah, the current, uh, CDC schedule is to have that swing space ready to go in the fourth quarter twenty four. So again, if something happens there, we'll have this facility in place if that's the case. But in the meantime, it's for any additional things that are going on with the, uh, stealing vehicles and.
Yeah.
Grab, yeah, whatever in terms of.
The end of twenty twenty four. And the CDC is, if it's soon as it's on schedule, please, this gets shut down.
Yes. That would be.
Lot A and B would both get shut down.
Yes, so there would not be necessary as far as the the use of the CDC. Not whether they're available as a secure detention facility for other things, but in terms of the overall CDC plan, once we build the fifty eight new beds, CDC in general will not be using these this space.
When you say fifty eight, that's total of all the beds that CDC at the end of twenty four, correct?
Right. The forty new bags, the ten existing beds.
Existing is thirty one.
Thirty one at the CDC. Yes. And then eight. So at CDC, again, that's kind of keeping track of what's going on. When we did the first modifications to CDC, those are all SSD beds. You can go back to second slide, please, for the third one. So remember, because you have different populations, everything's to be built to SSD, the the higher criteria, right? But the new facility for the temporary facilities we're building at the, uh, mod space is all just SD. So it's only juveniles to be housed out there. We can't put adolescent offenders, anything racey age cannot go out the modification space on the annex. All those AOs will have to stay out here. So that's up to the staff to figure out how the most, uh, youth are going to be shifted around.
When does the current waiver for OCFS expire?
August. End of, end of this month.
End of this month. At the full ledge, I asked if we were going to, if we could approach the administration to approach OCFS to get a waiver through twelve twenty four. That's clearly what we need.
Right.
Have we heard anything back on that?
There's efforts underway to get that going, but I don't know what the status is right now.
There there's efforts underway. We just haven't gotten the answer yet.
So you already, efforts underway means you contacted, made the request.
Yes.
Do you know when you're going to hear from them?
No.
Do they know you've got? I mean, is there also one in to extend August thirty first? Are we going to be in a crisis mode September first?
I missed the beginning of your question.
Okay. The current waiver for the eight beds that exist expires at the end of this month.
Yes.
We are, we also doing something to get that extended? So that come September first, we don't suddenly have OCFS come in and say, shut down my day. You don't have a waiver anymore because they've they've only given, as far as I understand, two waivers to all fifty seven upstate counties, well, upstate Long Island counties.
Well, so the waiver in my day is only for three beds. The eight beds that are there have been approved. So they won't take away.
Permanently approved?
Approved on, not part of the waiver, but approved as part of the the construction of that.
Project.
Right. So there's just.
Approved. Okay, maybe, maybe I'm asking the wrong question. We can occupy my day as long as you want to. Those, those.
For the duration of construction. Right?
Yeah, I'd have to check exactly what it is, but we got approval to build the eight beds in my day. Well, we have now.
Just like you have approval to build, I'm assuming to build ten beds in my.
Correct. Yeah, we got that. The the waiver that we have right now is for the COTS, the eight COTS, if you will. So five that are out at CDC, three that are at uh, the annex. That's the way we're just going to go away.
So OCFS has approved these for usage permanently or only until the CDC is completed construction.
I'm not sure exactly what the approvals for, but I think just like the CDC, you got to get annual recalls on your license, right? So we, I'd have to check and see what that is.
Well, I ask these questions at full ledge and I thought I got pretty firm answers and now it sounds like it's not quite the case.
Well, the the thing you gotta remember is as we're talking. the thing you gotta remember is as we're talking, and I, maybe when it comes to ledge, we'll talk about bedrooms versus beds versus COTS, right? So the, the waiver that's there right now for the eight beds are really the COTS dorm style type thing. When we talk about the beds, we should probably differentiate bedrooms versus COTS as we're talking about things, so.
I fully agree. That would have helped.
Yeah, I think that would have helped clarify a little bit.
Your answer for, I think.
Right, so in twenty, in, uh, sixty eight, the upper left hand corner, there's twenty one SSD bedrooms. And sixty seven, the lower right hand corner, there's ten SSD bedrooms. And then at the annex, we have eight, right now, eight SD bedrooms. We want to build ten additional SD bedrooms. And we have a waiver for five COTS, if you will, at sixty eight and three COTS at the annex.
I guess, but bottom line question I wanted to ask. Of the ones being put at MCC, if we get to the end of twenty twenty four and the kids continue to misbehave and it even gets worse, which it seems to be doing, and we continue to use these, this, you know, this MCC facility for the whatever number of available beds, eighteen plus three COTS or whatever.
Okay. I, I can't, that's a lot.
If we can, we can talk to, to John and to Jeff about it and get back to you on it.
Appreciate it.
No problem.
Because I'll be asking again in a week and a half.
We'll be ready.
Yeah. And then, again, to clarify, because it, it did, was a confusing thing. I think we should help differentiate bedrooms versus cats because there's a difference there, right? The cats relate to the.
My impression was the waiver was for everything at MCC.
No, no.
That was my impression. I'm just telling you.
I understand.
And it was also the person sitting at my left and right, they both have the same feel.
Okay.
Um, think the last question. So the mod A, mod B beds meet the current OCFS standards for the youngest population.
Yeah, secure detention.
Right. I owe you the term.
Yeah, I know. That's why I put the, uh, acronyms up front.
Yeah. Yep, no, I understand.
Yeah.
Um, okay. So in theory, we could get permission to use those
Right.
because they meet the standard.
Yeah, eighteen. It's flex space.
Long term, down term. And we're building them to that standard.
You're spending the money.
Because we, what we spend, we spent twenty some million on CDC, right? Maybe.
The new bill?
Yeah.
Forty six.
Yeah, it's like fifty million.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you. I'm done.
Yeah, it was like, uh, almost a million dollars of that, you know, it's.
Well.
So that came in two stages, didn't it?
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
Yeah.
Two twenties.
Yeah, so the thing, yeah, you gotta, you have to remember that in addition to building the new CDC, that's actually making up for the SD or the juvenile thing that was built. So when everybody moved out there in two thousand fourteen, there was still program space that was obligated to be built out there that never got built. That's actually done part of the new bill.
Right.
So the forty sixes are really a million bucks of room because you have other things that are being picked up, but.
Well, it's support space, you know, if you got to have a gym, if you have this.
Yep, you're right.
Yeah.
I don't think anybody's going to walk up and just kind of use it.
Yeah.
Not the way I'm seeing it.
No. George, you're all set.
Yeah, for now.
Okay. You'll take your mark.
No, I, I think it's inconsistent.
Yeah. Okay. Good brother. Ralph said. Okay, thanks for answering the questions. Uh, hearing no other questions, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Good online with eyes and.
Aye.
Any, uh, any, any knows, any nays? Any abstentions? Hearing none, the motion passes. Thank you. Thanks, Sean.
Thank you.
Yeah, nice job. Any other business? Kim, are you all set with notes?
I am.
Okay, cool. Yes, yeah. Uh, if there's no other business, our next scheduled meeting is September twenty eighth at three thirty if needed. And, uh, with that, I'll need a motion for adjournment, please. Thank you, Robert and Andre. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Hey.
Great to see everyone. Enjoy the rest of the summer.